I thought they were excellent as usual.
Yes Cindy.
And no changes.
No, no changes. A lot of things that were in here that we will discuss tonight, I know this, which is good. We can use it as a reference.
I'll make a motion and we accept the minutes.
Is there a second? Kathy, second. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, Cindy. Can I say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We are going to discuss zoning and subdivision fees. Dave, how would you like to begin?
Well, I... Section 8-1(c) of the general statutes allows any municipality to establish a schedule of reasonable fees for the processing of applications by the Municipal Zoning Commission, Planning Commission, Combined P&amp;Z, ZBA, or inland wetlands. Such schedules shall supersede any specific fees set forth in the general statutes. This has been on the books for a long time. I had a question and sort of a discussion with a gentleman in my office about fees and we were disagreeing as to what the amount of the fees was. So I sort of started pushing it and then I determined that we don't have an ordinance and it would be difficult for me to have that fight. So consequently, this is where we are. So I made a spreadsheet of fees that we charge and fees that other towns charge.
Did you see any discrepancies in these fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any extra copies?
Hey, let go.
Of which?
Of anything. The only thing, I printed the agenda off the... I didn't get anything this time.
Okay.
If you have an extra.
Did you get the packet by email?
From, yeah, for the...
For tonight's meeting.
The agenda.
And there was also the minutes?
Minutes from last meeting, yes.
Okay, good.
Yep. When we have a special permit for a ZBA application or anything that we have to have a public hearing for, we need to advertise it twice in a paper of general circulation and then we need to publish the legal decision afterwards. So there are three ads. Basically, they cost $100 each. So we have $300 worth of fees right away. And I think our special permit fee right now is...
$150.
$250.
$150, $150, correct.
And the amendment to a zoning map is $150.
Right.
And the ZBA variance is $250.
Correct.
So I think what I suggested was to raise the special use permit to $350, which is on this handout is what I've suggested as opposed to what is on that other spreadsheet. Did you get one of those?
I think Laurie just handed it to me, yes.
So the site plan fee would go from $120 to $200. The house permit fee would stay the same. The special use permit would go to $350. The site plan would go to $200.
Dave, do you have one for Mike, one of these, so he could follow along?
Am I taking your only one? Yeah, that's all right, I'll share. And the amendments to the zoning map is $150 would go to $300. I left the campground renewal alone. I left the earth removal alone. I left a miscellaneous one at $50 for sheds less than 200 square feet and just miscellaneous items. In additions and accessory structures over $200 would go to $100.
From what?
$50. And then I put a sign in. We didn't really have a sign fee of $50. And then I added the zoning compliance letter fee, which I'm typically asked maybe a couple times a month by a Realtor or a bank or some compliance issue to write a letter. And we might as well charge the banks $25. These typically aren't our constituents.
And that's the only one, we don't have to send money to the state, huh?
Correct.
Well, that state fee just does jump everything up substantially, doesn't it?
It does.
Wow.
But at least we can say when it's $160, we can say, oh, well, $60 goes to the state, it's not our fault. I didn't change the subdivision regulation, subdivision fees at all. They seem to be in line with pretty much everybody else. And the wetlands fees are pretty much in line with everybody else in what we've done in the past.
At the 8.1, this was okay, right? There was no changes to this?
Correct.
I remember we put that in.
Right.
Okay. So we changed, oh, 1, 2, 3, 4 of them, Dave? Did I get all of them?
We changed the single-family house, we changed the special use...
Oh, no, single-family I didn't get. From what?
From $50.
To $100, okay. And then special use permit, site plan, amendments, the subdivision, and additions and accessory structures.
Correct, and the ZBA fees.
Dave, the figures that were in the package for the other towns, they do not include what they send to the state?
Correct.
Okay. So we can compare apples to apples with this?
I mean Laura and I sort of worked up this chart to make it sort of user-friendly, so...
So if you totaled the site plan revision, zoning $100, and the state fee is $60, why is the total $120?
Because my math is better?
Okay, so we'll just change that to $160.
Somehow we can blame it on the Excel.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay.
I just have a question. On the special use permit, if our costs are actually $300, why wouldn't we charge $300? Why are we looking for more?
Only because it really goes through the whole town in terms of, it goes to Public Works, it goes to the Fire Marshal, it goes to me, it goes to... We spend a bunch of time reviewing it internally here, which isn't covered in that cost.
No, it's covered in salaries though, right? I mean that's...
Yeah. I mean, they can be more, they can be less. You know, if I get two of them on the same night, then we do better. But if you just get one...
Because the ads are combined.
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
I mean, I have no problem, whatever you want to do about the fees, if you want to put it back down to $250 and leave it there. I have no, I have no real skin in the game.
Think about the number of special use permits we get. It seems like we get a fair amount.
We do get a fair amount, yes, yep.
So what are you thinking Cindy?
I just think it's appropriate to cover the actual hard costs of the advertisement.
Right.
And I'm just questioning why we would consider charging above that.
I'd say they're, you know, they're $90 times 3, or they can be $120 times 3. They're in there. It depends on how verbose I am.
So then you're up to the $360.
Yeah, yeah.
I know a few years ago Dennis redid all the fees in the building department and his intention was that you've got to support, the fees have to support the department so the town isn't paying taxes to keep the... I mean, I should say taxes, but it's coming out of another part of the budget. He really wanted to support it. So it would appear that, that's kind of what Dave's doing here. I hate to see these things go up like this, but I do understand the need.
And I don't know the last time you touched them.
No clue.
Effective 4/25/07.
Oh, seven.
So it's been 10 years.
So are you comfortable with the $350, Cindy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, again, this has to go to the selectmen.
Have you spoken to the...
Town meeting, it's going to do the whole...
Have you spoken to the first selectman about...
Yep.
Yeah, so she understands that this will be coming.
Yeah, I've sort of written up...
You have.
Ordinance.
And you're going to attach this, the IP schedule? Okay? Excellent job Dave. I mean, I cannot believe in all those years that that wasn't caught prior.
And a lot of work went into this, obviously. UN already did a lot to get here.
Right. Very good. So we did the fees. And I know we wanted to... What zoning besides the signs and breweries, was there something else under number 3 that you wanted to discuss?
No.
Okay, there's one thing I did want to bring up relative to the minutes, Dave.
Nancy, can I interrupt you for a second?
Certainly.
Should we vote on giving Mr. Perkins approval to move forward with these fees? Make it a formal thing?
With the fees? Otherwise, state statute says we have to follow the select...
Right, but we should...
The fees...
We should vote on that?
Is there a motion to approve the schedule of fees to be forwarded to the first selectman for a town meeting?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you Gina. One thing in the minutes, we had gone through our updated regulation book and there were some changes, minor housekeeping things. Were you able to complete those? I know you were away.
I have not put them in the book.
Okay.
I have a whole file of...
Okay.
Kathy statements and this and that and...
Okay.
References to the wrong numbers.
Yeah, that's on the last page, so it's right here. Excellent job too. It's all right down there for you.
I mean, I think by the time we get to... The forestry regulations and taking them out of ours and putting them in the wetlands.
Then everything's going to change.
I think when we get to that point, we can probably have a public hearing and get some of these new ones in and then...
Well, wait a minute, these were... These were all approved. It's just you came back with them in our packet and they weren't changed. These things I'm referring to in the minutes, Dave.
On, where is it?
On the last page, 4. Page 22 of the updated regs. The first sentence should be updated to stay the accessory buildings to primary area regulated in 7.4. Remember, still said 7.2.
Right.
Okay, those were all approved.
Correct.
So those just didn't mean to be changed now.
Okay.
But also, I would hold off until, of course, after the town meeting to change the fees and then the forestry and all of that. So in order to, you don't have to redo the whole book again, you know? I agree with you there.
And I have a couple things still that I went back through where you gave us the extra pages and it still appears. And I could be wrong, but it appears that a couple things are missing.
Okay, well, let's...
We can get into that later or another meeting at another time, whatever's best for us. But I wrote down, I found them again tonight and wrote them down.
Well, why don't you and I get together next week?
We can do that.
Do it one-on-one so we can...
Okay, just make sure they're put in though. There's nothing that has to go through a public hearing or anything. Now it was already done. Okay, good. I just wanted to bring that up. So otherwise, are we good with agenda item number 3, Dave? We move on to for review, zoning regulations, signs and breweries?
Yep.
Okay. We were charged to look at breweries, regulations from other towns in order to kind of assist Dave there. And I love your definition. I did spend some time. It's not easy going through other people's regulations, let me tell you. I went into Wellington's, they have 300 and some pages of regulations. And I couldn't find, I did a search for Wellington on breweries or brew pubs and nothing came up. I'm not saying they don't have regs, but nothing came up. I went on to Coventry. Coventry, they allow them by special use. And Summers, this is very interesting and I printed Summers up. Summers is the following building structures and uses are prohibited in all zoning districts. Breweries and distilleries everywhere, even in their business district. So that struck me as a little odd. So that's what I found on my research.
I also looked at a couple different towns. Windsor Locks allows both breweries and brew pubs.
In what zones?
In all business zones.
Business, okay, not residential, okay.
Right, no, none of them permit it in residential. Ellington permits...
And do they just do what we did here, they just define it and drop it in the table?
Yeah, Windsor Locks actually has some additional regulations concerning outdoor seating, the prohibition of walk-up and drive-through windows. The commission there can determine the appropriateness of outdoor seating, traffic safety, density, the size of the facility. A lot of the issues that we had talked about.
And do they do that by special use or is it all allowed?
I believe it's by special use.
Special use, yeah, definitely, yeah. I think that would be to ensure the character of the neighborhood, would you think?
Yeah, yeah. Ellington is the same. They allow breweries, brew pubs and distilleries in commercial and industrial zones. The town of Union actually allows them, I didn't get to print Unions out, but... Union allows the production of beer, malt, or ale by special permit. They define a brewery as the production of more than 5,000 barrels a year and they define a microbrewery as the production of less than 5,000 a year. But a special permit is required for both.
For both. Well, that's interesting. I never thought of Union being so small.
Who were they listed in that article?
Yeah, have you seen this article? Yeah, I didn't have a chance, but this article also references regulations in the towns of Brookfield, Stamford, Bridgeport, Manchester, North Haven, Stonington, Stamford, and Stratford. And this is a couple of years old, so there actually may be some more at this point. Also East Hampton, Kent, and Salem.
What, are you saying they all...
They all regulate, right.
By special use, I wonder? Doesn't probably state in the article?
No, I would have to look at each one individually.
I'm assuming it would be.
What do you think Cindy would be a good way to go from what you've seen in your research?
Well, I mean, it looks like the majority of the towns that I looked at all allow them in both commercial and industrial areas.
Business.
And by special use, which...
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense.
Yeah. All business zones, I mean, every possible, except residential, to me, makes good sense.
Whenever we allow a restaurant or a tavern would be the same zones where we would allow this.
Right.
Yep.
So you would just put it in the table of...
We just add it after restaurants in the table.
Okay. And the definitions, that's fine.
And the definitions, I think that does it. I mean, this is basically Branford's. That's all they have. And they consider, you know, a brewery to be an industrial operation and we basically covered that. It's just the industrial processing of...
So we opened the door as wide as we can, in fact.
Coventry, and I tried to print it, just page 94, 95, which it did have quite a few paragraphs about breweries and brew pubs. And there was a specific section about outdoor entertainment. So I just wanted to bring that up if that needs to be stated anywhere besides just the definition. There was a concern on...
Yeah, we had talked about that the last time.
Right, right. But it's still a special use permit. So is it necessary or not, I guess that's my question? To make a section just for brew pubs and breweries and...
I mean, you sort of have outdoor entertainment up at, who was the one up on E Street or Whales, Rick's Place?
Right, Rick's Place.
And, you know, you have concerts over at Sun Valley. I'm not quite sure where that falls into any sort of permit whatsoever.
It was crazy because I said print page 94, 95, I kept printing page 88, 89, five times. So I gave up. So I did read it and from my, right, from my memory. It also incorporated in that section with breweries, the agricultural uses.
Right.
So we're right on target, definitely, with both. So I think we're covered with just the definitions and special use permit in the tables.
I think you can do this as part of that, right?
Absolutely, Nancy. You know, again, leaving the door as wide open as we can for any business venture in effect, so...
Absolutely. At the same time, looking at the surrounding areas not to impact anyone particular. So this would also be under a public hearing too? So add that to our list. So the forestry will be as soon as inland wetlands does the regs, correct?
Right.
Yeah, they're working on it.
And that's you doing it for them?
That's you.
Well, I'm just sort of saying I forgot, yeah.
Ours get thrown out completely because we don't have that power anymore.
Right, and they have a bit of a concern about how are they supposed to regulate forestry if it's not in the wetland? Well, the answer is basically you don't if it's not in the wetland.
Exactly.
You don't.
And then you refer to state statute again?
I was supposed to forward, what they wanted to do was take your regulations and just put them in their regulations and not screw around with doing any research.
I've read through ours though and I could see some changes needed in ours.
Well, they just want to get them in.
Just to get something?
Then we're going to refer them to the Agricultural Advisory Commission.
I like that. Excellent.
Why not do that?
Yeah.
Excellent.
And I think then you have a place to start.
Right, so the state sort of wants 60 days to look at it. So I should have forwarded that to them.
And the ag group, the ag group will put the work in. You know, the ag group will definitely put the work in and come back to wetlands with something really substantial. And that's what they need.
So then once they do, we're out of the loop. Then it goes to the town, to the selectmen for town meeting.
For?
For the forestry.
Correct.
And then we just remove it in a public hearing.
So I mean, we're talking about August or something.
Oh, yeah, definitely. So that's good on breweries, definitely. And the definition, everyone, I agree, it's fine. But Cindy, yeah. Okay, so...
What's the brew pub at the Wits School?
Yeah. Hey, what brew pub? Hey, why not? Anything to get the building open.
Big one.
No, he just likes brew pubs, that's all.
Brew pubs, all right. So signs. What did we decide on signs, Dave?
I didn't do anything about signs.
Okay, well, that's not good. You know, you have enough on your plate right now. Do you think about next meeting, maybe we'll bring it up again? Number 5, new and other business. I just wanted to report to everybody. I apologize for the quick notice at our last combined meeting. Michael, I need your cell phone number, I could not get ahold of you.
You could have come here, I was in the parking lot.
You were. I had to...
You yelled out the window.
I apologize, but Dave Perkins called and it was late before any decision was being made. That was the storm with the tornadoes. And so at that point, Mary Mina was going to cancel her meeting. So they called and wanted to know if we wanted to, if I wanted to cancel the combined and I said, well, they're going to cancel, yes, definitely. And the weather was questionable. But then I understand they did have a quick meeting because they had to forward the budget.
Right, but they didn't have a court.
No, they didn't, okay.
No, they ended up having to cancel anyway. Mary was all alone.
Right, so...
Yeah, we was all alone.
Yeah, she was here. So anyway, but that's why it was a decision made very late because it didn't really happen till it was 5, something like that. So I discussed with Dave that perhaps...
Did you make it here?
He was here, so I got to get your cell phone number after, remind me. Tuesday, June 5th, the first Tuesday in June. Is that all right with Mary?
I think so, yes.
Okay, so we will do it Tuesday, June 5th.
Right.
Combined. And so I'll double check with you that that's okay with Mary and I will call Amanda, I mean Amber. I think she was all set anyway.
It was on the website.
Yeah, it did get up on the website.
So I said, I must be wrong, I thought it was something. And I checked the website and said, cancel.
So before it goes on film, you can tell me later your cell phone number. Another thing, I am so happy to report, Butch has some paperwork to give to everyone. The subcommittee for the, to advise on the work on the POCD and the business industrial park, we have a mission statement, minutes, and a schedule of meetings. So I would turn it over to Butch.
Okay, we met on May 2nd for our first meeting and I think that...
I have mine.
I think that we had a, actually had a pretty good meeting. One more?
Yeah. And then all.
Perfect, thank you. You can have one for Chris.
What is this yours?
That's mine.
Okay, Mike, thank you.
Yeah, okay, we appointed Kathy as our secretary.
That's shocking. Surprise, surprise.
It was unanimous.
What about unanimous?
Well, majority, yeah.
It was majority rule. And we established a schedule of regular meetings, which is, I think, the last page here. And then we had, we put together a mission statement, which is the third page. You can look through that under, at your leisure.
You know, actually, Butch, I would like to read it.
Yeah, go ahead.
That would be great. The mission statement is, "The mission of this planning subcommittee is to advise and work with the Planning and Zoning Commission on a plan for the future of the town of Stafford while following the plan of conservation and development. The primary mission is to find space to locate a business industrial park with the goal of raising the median household income of the residents of Stafford to levels consistent with the median household income of a state of Connecticut. This committee will also work to increase the grand list while maintaining the character of the town of Stafford." Excellent, thank you.
And, well, one of the reasons why is because of that, you know, I've been looking at that stuff from certain years now. And Stafford's always on the low end of the scale when it comes to median household income. And then Dave passed out some information here a few weeks ago to us to confirm that also. And that was from that group that you had, you found out the information in Hartford. So I think it's important to put that into, to use. Put it right in the statement or, you know, or... So anyway, we had a discussion of how to move forward and Dave was extremely helpful with that since he already has a lot of information, a lot of background. And he worked with, I think it was the last time when Mike Crowe, I think, he worked with them, I think it was trying to, I think that's what he said, to develop a business park. And so we talked about several different ways to do this and we decided that some of the first things we needed to do were not just find the land, but look at the sewer, the water, what's available where, and then any land that might be available in those areas where the sewer and water already is. That's what people are going to want, that's what businesses are going to want. And I'm going to be talking with Dave about... And I'm going to be talking with Dave about the vacant properties he might know about, and Dennis about utilities. And then Dave is going to talk to Rick Hartenstein about the sewer and Connecticut water, about water. So next meeting, these items will be brought up, and then we'll be looking for places at some point where we can actually put a business park, and we're going to get Dave to help us out with that, I think. That's basically where we are. I think we had a pretty good first meeting.
Sounds great.
Excellent. I noticed in your minutes that you discussed some of the possibilities of what you would like to see in a business park.
Yes.
Professional office building, high-tech manufacturing, biotech, electric boat training facility.
Yeah, that was one of Dave's ideas.
Wow.
He had written somewhere that there were going to be glues on that kind of thing. And since there are people around in Stafford area who've worked for electric boat.
Wow.
It might be a good idea if we could talk to them and see if we could, you know, do something about that. You know, there's other things we can do.
You know, have you interrupt for a second? When you say electric boat, right away I think of Courtney. I wonder if, reaching out to him if he might have an idea or two.
I'm calling Joe Courtney.
Oh, Joe, yeah, absolutely. I was thinking about that yesterday, that we could get, if we get to that point, we should talk to Joe.
Right.
And he's done a lot with electric boats, so, you know, that could be our...
Just got him a contract, I think.
Yes, they did, yeah. Possible business incubator in conjunction with Yukon, absolutely. I think that that's possible. Now, the vacant buildings, that's going to be a little more difficult.
That's a lot more difficult because the town of Stafford doesn't own a lot of those.
No, no.
Those vacant buildings, I mean, we own a few vacant buildings, but nothing that's sizable, except for the Whitt School. You know, I mean, that could be part of this, but...
Well, that can be something we can push at the joint meeting, too, that. That the E D C needs to work on.
Well, I believe the E D... I believe E D C is working on, they have either a subcommittee or some people working on the vacant buildings in town, I was told, so. But I think on our part, Butch, if you can identify where the vacant buildings are, what the zones are, and what's available for them, like the water and sewer, if that comes, becomes easier for a business to move into a vacant building relative to zoning, then the owner of that building would have a better chance to perhaps sell it if they want to, to a business. I think that would make it easier to move the vacant buildings to become populated with businesses, maybe. I could be wrong. Mike, would you like to chime in on that one? Is that thinking proper or no?
Yeah, but those are privately owned, and then people are still paying taxes on the business.
Correct.
On the property. So unless they want to make any additional money, I don't know why they're still vacant and they're not advertising, or maybe they are.
Well, what I'm saying is perhaps zoning is holding them back from businesses that they could sell to. That's what I'm saying.
Is it?
I don't know.
Oh.
I don't know.
I was thinking it's a business, I might, it shouldn't be.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's some out in the Staffordville area that probably are zone residential.
Oh, I didn't know that. I'm thinking of everything that's on 190.
Right, right, but we do... We have like New City Road, we have, we have off of Hyville Road.
Oh, so those are...
Those are residential areas. Oh, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. It'd be nice to fill some of the vacant buildings, but it's going to be a lot harder.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Because they're privately owned. The owners, how do you get them to move?
It also tends to be more expensive. I'm thinking of like the Hyville Mill to retrofit or repair something like that than to build in a business.
Gone by, almost gone by.
The Hyville Mill has its own set of problems. Some of the, you know, land around the Hyville Mill is contaminated.
But that's what I think you could work with the E D C on.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Good point, Nancy, and if we all work together and made it that tiny bit more attractive to do the Hyville Mill than the new building, you know, if you could.
If you could.
If you could. Try, if we all work together enough, all the different boards and commissions and this board of selectmen, boy, it'd be great.
You never know what's possible on this.
Because hate to lose those buildings, and most were very well constructed, but there are issues, of course.
This planning zoning has nothing to do with tax rates on something like...
Correct.
They wouldn't be able to suggest anything like, okay, that would have to come from a different board.
And that's a good point to bring up, though, no, this will not...
Go to the property owner and say, "Listen, let's get someone in here who's a $5 million company, which there's a ton of them out there, and they're going to be paying tax to the town. You could ease up on your property tax a little bit and, you know, let's try to develop this little vacant piece of property."
Look, this is, this is what we did with the mill. They got a grant, plus they did get a break for a little while. And, look, they've hired everyone back, all the skilled workers. They have contracts with J Crew, with the Navy. I mean, it's thriving and 300-some employees now, I guess.
It is very controversial when a town gives tax breaks.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, always is. But, you know, if you, often if you look at the end result, you can see the benefit.
Right.
But it's controversial, no question about it, or always will be. I think Butch, as part of the historical society, the, was it, what's his face over in, Roosevelt Mills over in Vernon? To make that apartments, he got a tremendous break on it, right?
Grants, yeah.
He got a 75% tax break on it. With a, over, for 25 years, with a 3% increment every year.
So some people feel he got too much. Others say he resurrected something that was an eyesore and falling apart, so...
And now they're paying taxes.
You see both sides. I mean, I understand.
Those kind of things are difficult because you have to weigh, you know, the tax breaks against the income that you might get from it. Sometimes, one of the options we discussed about the Whitt School is just knocking it down. For that reason. You know, it may not generate the tax income that you think it's going to generate. It depends on what you do with it. And that's a very difficult property to do anything with. For the simple reason that we've been talking to Dave about it, and it's a zoning issue. The thing sits on Hyde Park. Every inch of property around it belongs to Hyde Park.
It's open space.
Right from the walls out.
And it's open space to begin with.
And so what do you do? There's no deed for it.
It becomes...
For the building itself, there's no deed.
So, you know, these things become townwide discussions that you have to hash out and make the best decision with everyone giving input. It's...
There's one thing, though.
Tough.
With the Whitt School, because it is municipal owned, you're not getting any taxes now. So if it, at any chance, can be refurbished and businesses or whatever can go in there, then you're getting taxes again. You tear it down and you don't have a possibility of anything.
That's true, but you also don't have...
Well, you could still build. I mean, theoretically, you could start over again.
And now, we're speaking now as townspeople, not as zoning board members. These really aren't zoning issues, as you said. It's not really our...
No, they're not.
We can't really...
No, because it's open space, definitely. It's Hyde Park Commission. So we got sidetracked here, but anyway. So Butch, this is excellent, and I appreciate that. And whenever you're ready to come back, we'll definitely put you on the agenda. As you said, you were going to meet June 6th as your next meeting.
Yes.
So maybe the meeting after that, if you want to have anything, we'll gladly just put it under new and other business when you're ready.
Let me throw two more cents in as far as Butch, and this is the planning subcommittee. I'm kind of excited and interested once Dave Palmberg has talked to Ricky Hartenstein because if, with the hospital's new septic system and no need to tie in, that would open up a certain amount at the plant, I think, which could open some doors to extending lines, possibly somewhere else in town. I don't know, but this could be exciting. Because we've always been holding that chunk for the hospital, and I would guess now we don't need to, but of course we'll have to know that for sure.
But what about the new senior center? That was just hooked up.
Oh, the housing up there? Yeah, but that was always planned for. It was, the hospital was a significant chunk we were saving for them.
Oh, so they had planned for that previously.
Well, everyone thought they were going to have to hook up for the financial reasons. I don't think anyone expected them to do their own plant.
Well, they were under...
Right, no, but I mean, the water...
To hook up for years.
Yeah.
About 20 years.
But the Water Pollution Control Authority.
Right.
They had to hook up, and I don't think any of us expected...
Because the last Ricky reported, they were very close to capacity.
So it'll be curious after, when they come back with the planning committee.
Right.
Where that stands.
I'll send Dave an email on that and ask him when he talks to Rick.
Sure.
To bring that up. I think that's a good idea, a good thing to know.
Is there anything else, Dave, that you have?
They're doing a big job up there at the hospital with the septic system. They have, if you look at it, it looks like they have teacups and little Mack trucks and they're dumping stuff. It's huge what they're doing.
I'll elaborate next door.
Yeah, oh, you do. That's a big project, that's.
It's immense, and they're, you know, they're just, they're waiting for dirt, and they're...
Actually, my, our company is doing the controls in the inside of the building, but...
Oh, good.
Yeah, I had nothing to do with it, unfortunately.
It's a company, though, that's good.
They are at some point going to come back and want to put a road to the, I'm not sure what the direction is over there, either the north or the west side of the plant, behind the fences there. They're going to need to move that road that's closer to the hospital to the other side.
Off of 190?
No, just internally.
Internal, okay.
Internally.
They own, they own a lot of land.
Does that know they go right down?
Yeah, it's not going to be a major deal.
They went right down 190 with, I saw a lot of dirt and trees down there.
They also, they also, where they're moving the dirt, they're scooping out the dirt and they're moving it over to the other side and making a mountain. And then they're going to put a drainage system through that, which was basically just a bunch of riprap on the design. And now they've decided to actually engineer it. And put it into pipes, and they slow it down and everything else, so I'm sort of waiting for that.
Good, good.
To approve that.
Abishan is moving right along, huh?
Abishan's moving right along. The place next to Basil's is getting cleaned up. They should be paving that in the next couple of days.
What about the Cumberland Farms?
I have not heard from Cumberland Farms. I did get a site plan from 7-Eleven who wants to basically take their canopy down, dig up their tanks, dig up their pumps, replace the canopy, replace the pumps, replace the tanks.
They have a pretty small footprint there.
I think you have a very small footprint.
And they're aware of the possibility of Cumberland's next to them?
They are aware of it, sort of.
And they still want to...
Well, they've given me a plan for, basically, they're just redoing what they did before, and I think I can just approve it. It's not...
Upgrading, that's wonderful.
Any major changes.
Right, you're allowed to do site planning, definitely. I'm just surprised.
Must be an up business in town. Everyone's figured that.
I mean, the price of gas is going up, the margins have to be going up, too, right?
I don't know.
No, I think the CEOs are getting into the...
I have a special use permit for a solar company who wants to put solar panels on the roof of Evergreen out by the hospital, not the hospital, but...
It's Evergreen, right.
Evergreen. It's a large enough system that it needs a special use permit. I've scheduled them at a public hearing for our next meeting.
How large is the system, Dave?
The system is 229.9 kilowatt DC.
Yeah, okay.
836 solar modules.
229.
336?
836.
So 229 kilowatt, okay.
It's on the roof.
That's a nice one, though. That's good.
You know, I mean, I don't think we really have much input from a special use permit.
To give it scale, I have five kilowatts on my house. So 229 is a nice size system.
Well, that's similar to what we have on the high school. We have 290 watts kilowatts.
That's great. Makes good sense. That's a sunny spot up there, too, at Evergreen, I think.
Well, the hospital just upgraded their electrical system, but they didn't do anything solar.
I think it's just because of the payback on that, the solar. We do a lot of energy projects, and the payback takes as long as the lifespan of the panels.
No.
So...
There's a good ques, that's, there's an argument.
No, it's, I mean, it's not for here. I'm just saying, it's...
But we found... The life of the panels could be 40 or 50 years. The warranty on the panels is 25, for the most part. Payback, you know, depending on what they, how much your system costs them, of course, should be a lot shorter than 25 years.
I agree with that.
No, my argument, Mike, to anyone when I'm talking about solar is, yes, that's why Walmart put them on all their roofs because they love to throw away money. You know, they, when they became the biggest user of panels, I always thought that was a turning point to tell everyone, that's how well they work. Walmart's putting them everywhere. But everybody analyzes it differently.
It all depends, yeah, exactly.
Well, thank you, everyone. I guess this is it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? I was going to say, don't worry about all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, Dave, very much.